Okay, here we go. We call this commissioner meeting order, please join us in the pledge.
Congratulations to the five United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. We will start with the approval of our minutes from our previous meeting. You all had a chance to review the minutes?
We've approved the regular meeting and the public hearing.
Second pet.
A motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the September 2nd regular meeting minutes and the August 13th public hearing minutes. All in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. First thing we have on our agenda today is a bid opening for reassessment bids. And before we, as we start opening these things up, our county assessor Jeff Coleman is here. Jeff, do you have anything you want us to know prior to considering these bids?
Um, I'll leave the fact that in case the county wants to know, let me come forward. Yeah, I do, I do double check and run the numbers on doing reassessment in house. And it is still so way out of our reach that our only option is to hire a vendor. So I do want people of Fayette County to know that I'm doing what's, uh, it's just much more affordable to hire someone who's got a lot of practice getting that done, so. But I do.
And that has been the case for a long time.
Yeah.
Now, I have had questions about why we do reassessment in this way. And it is much cheaper.
It is. And we do, the people that do this kind of work are very good at it, very knowledgeable. And, you know, when you go out in the field, sometimes you don't even know what you're looking at. You know, I think a lot of you have been around some of the farms. You get some things that don't fit in the book. The book says you have barns, you have this, you have that. When people start making car sheds with a roof room on top of it, you know, it's, it gets real complicated. But these people are, they're very well trained, so I trust what they do. But I did want to say that out loud and make sure people understand that I am running the numbers. It's still cheaper to do it by hiring a vendor.
Okay. The first package we have here is from Tyler Technologies. And bid from Tyler Technologies is $416,040. Second package is from Advalon Solutions for $398,400. Look at that. That stuff don't want to give up.
I would have thought they all have tremendous knives, but we need to get them new.
Well, I've got better knives, I didn't think to bring one. I guess I should have borrowed yours.
I'm a lawyer, we don't carry pocket knives.
Don't mess with me, because I'm the only one in this group that's allowed to carry a knife.
Is that, that's. That's a court order, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay. The third package is from Vision Government Solutions. Their bid is $402,270. Next bid is from Nexus Group. Find the bid page here. Find it there.
Is that true?
Okay, let me see if I've got the right. That doesn't have a page number on it there. Okay. That one reads similar to this one. Okay, from Nexus Group, their bid is $364,000 even. Okay. Jeff, would you, would you prefer that we take these bids in under advisement and let you review the actual packages and make sure that?
That they be dispatched, so we'll make sure that we dispatch and they go on rest. I will return the next commissioner meeting. I'll bring in a comparison sheet so you can see how everybody kind of scored, if you will.
Okay. There's one from Nexus. Accept them for review by the, by the assessor and he'll report back to us.
Move to accept them for review.
Not seconded.
Okay. A motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to accept these bids for review and await recommendation by the county assessor. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane.
All right. I'll put my thoughts in writing and bring it. There's the sheet back so you can all see.
Did you have one of those Nexus that we could keep with us? Because I think you got them all. We don't even have one to review.
You have one or two.
Oh, if there's one or more, as long as you've got one, I thought I'd give you one. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. County Recorder Lisa Litt here with a CSI contract.
Hello. Okay. So I'm here today for our annual CSI contract. We pay it monthly, but the total is $26,573.94. That is all paid out of funds that are generated through the Recorder's Office, so from record perpetuation and then the Security ID Protection Fund. So it really is, is a contract that funds itself through the Recorder's Office.
How much did you say that was?
$26,573.94. And then, um, just a little bit of information for you guys. I checked with CSI today before we came down here. And here today, we have backlogged this year 5,506 documents. So that doesn't account what has come in, what we had done with US imaging. That's what we're doing here in house, so. And of course, that is growing every day, so. Any questions for me?
Nope. Question to approve the CSI contract for the Recorder's Office for $26,573.94.
Second.
A motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the contract between CSI and the county on behalf of the Recorder's Office. All in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. There you go, anything else?
That is it.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it, have a great day.
For 911 dispatch, we have Jeff Griffin today.
All right. Just a few things, a lot fewer than I have been having, so let's go a little bit quicker. We did get our electronic payroll going last week. And it actually worked, and I didn't get an email back from Ms. Haley, so I did great. We did great, I should say, they helped me out with that. Mike and a lot goes credit to Haley to get that done. And, well, I won't know till Friday, but hopefully everybody gets a check. So, that's the goal. We are doing CPR training, we're going to do that next week. Nate Stevens from the Fire Department is going to do that for us. Um, we are, he is just doing a $5 fee for each person. I've got that money in my budget to pay for that, so we're going to do that. That's a couple of days next week. We ended up doing it a couple of days so we can get people to both sessions. The director job description, I apologize, I didn't get that sent to you if you're late. But what I did was, I got information from several different counties and compiled that into just one document. Obviously, we'll probably have to go through it and parse out what we don't want and what's already included in the job description that we, that we currently have. But I did note that there was a lot, a lot of good things in, like the one I got from Owen County, that there was quite a few things that wasn't in ours, so, to, that will, that should be, to do that. So, whenever we get a chance, we can go over that and talk about that. Or obviously, you guys review that and, and see how you want to handle that. Questions about that?
Yes, we will review it.
Okay.
For sure.
Yeah.
I know I haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Well, and again, I apologize, I intended to get it to you yesterday, but I had some other stuff come up and I didn't get it done till, till, actually, this morning, so.
That's fine.
Okay. We had another team meeting this morning, we had our second team meeting. Things are going very well. We've got three trainees that are about a week away from being ready for the chair. And I don't mean electric chair, sort of, sort of electric chair, but the dispatch chair. The dispatch chair, we've got, get them through some few more qualifications and they'll be ready to go. We are actually putting them on the schedule starting the 20th. So they'll finish up their training this week, and then they'll be on the schedule starting the 20th. We are still, we're encumbered by IDAX and the state police. We can't get those, as soon as they mail us the packets, then they can actually start running license plates and registrations and those kind of things under a probationary type thing. But then they can at least do it. That's, and that's kind of been the holdup, because we've got one operator and a trainee on. And if I've got the city guys and the county guys running license plates and doing all that, it's, it's kind of cumbersome. So hopefully, we'll get that within the next week as well. We did, last week, we had our final addressing training in the Flex, for the Flex software. That's going to allow us to have a predisposed list of addresses. So when they put in, and I apologize, I'm excited about this, because it's, it's going to really help them and it's going to help us get data out a lot better. We also learned that we can go in and just on the address, we can put alerts on there. So if we have a medical issue at that address, not necessarily the person, but the address, that's, that's, that's all going to bring that together, so that when the dispatcher puts that call in, they're going to see that alert, so they can let EMS know, hey, you know, this guy's asthmatic, he's diabetic, whatever the case may be, but we can create those alerts. And we're going to get consistent addressing, so. Points of interest, intersections, I just got some information about our bridges. We're going to put our main bridges in there, so they can actually search by those, because obviously, we get a lot of calls of three mile bridge. So then now they'll be able to search by three mile bridge, and that's going to come up in the list. So, I'm kind of excited about that.
Will that give you history?
It will. And, oh yes, that's the other good thing it does. So, so when, when the, when the dispatcher's looking at that call and their call screen, it automatically comes out. Obviously, it's only going to start from October 1st, when we turn this on, moving forward. Now, we are going to go back and we're going to geovitalize all of our problem child addresses, which, lack of a better term, but where we have alerts that we need and those kind of things. So those will come up. So yes, it will give us address history, so, great, that's a great tool. The volunteer fire guys came and seen me the other day. They brought me a couple of suggestions for SOPs as far as grain entrapment and water rescue. So we're going, working on getting those put together, and I'll have those ready probably within the next week or so to, to implement those. The grain entrapment is obviously coming at a good time. The, we found out that the Union County Fire Department, one of the fire departments over there actually has a vacuum system, that they are willing to come help us if we, if we get into that situation. So we now have that implemented in the software, so that when that comes up, they've got the questions to ask, that they need to ask. And it's also got the response with the phone number, who they need to call, and all that stuff, too. And that's one thing that I'm trying to do, is trying to get all of the call natures that way, so that whether it's a five-year person that's taking the call, or a five-month person taking the call, it's going to be consistent. So, pretty happy about that as well. I did appoint Sam Caldwell, the lead supervisor this morning, and, because I'm going to be gone. I'm going to be, I'm going to Las Vegas the end of September through October 4th. So if there's any issues or problems, she'll take care of that. She is the senior, senior operator dispatcher that we have, and she can handle it very well. So, she'll be handling that, so. Questions?
Think you're doing a good job.
Trying.
Thank you.
It's getting better day by day. Can we go ahead and do Wade's stuff while I'm here?
Sure.
Okay. The ADA compliance, he's requesting that the, let me just double check this here. I'm just a fill-in. Let's see. I'd like to request that the commissioners adopt by resolution the ADA transition plan, that I believe he's sent that to you guys. Okay? Because I don't know that about him.
Yeah, we have two resolutions here.
Uh, there was, according to my notes, that's an ADA transition plan and then a Fayette County Title IV implementation plan.
That is correct.
Okay.
And he has a, I know, at least on one, he has a September 30 deadline he has to be.
Uh, yes, the, the information I have, um, but the note I have says both of them. Submit the plans to Indiana Department of Transportation, the plans submit this year for 2026.
Yeah. And if we need to amend anything, and we've got, you know, we can do that at any time, but he has to be able to meet that deadline regardless. We can go ahead and take care of those for you right now, Jeff.
Okay.
So we have to move to approve, make a motion to approve both the resolutions, 25 R. 6 and?
7.
7.
6.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve resolutions 25 R. 6 and 25 R. 7. Any further question? All in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. We'll get these signed here right now and get them in the hands of the auditor and she'll know. We'll need copies on this side for official record, and Wade will no doubt have a copy also.
Okay.
That takes two of those. Is there anything else you need from?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Was the county clerk here a minute ago?
Yeah.
John, do you have anything for us today?
No, not today.
Okay. Mr. Giddinger, do you have anything for us from the Highway Department today?
Just some information. We are getting real close to finishing up the widening of the new paint road. We've been up Ziegler Road, up 400, clear to Hawkinsville. We finished 350 this morning, and they're on School Road right now. So, don't imagine that'll quite get done today, but I think it'll finish in the morning. So we'll have, I don't know if you've seen any of them, but I think they look pretty nice, they're coming out well. That road wide, but a lot of places that's that far off the road, and it's, yesterday ourselves was on 350 all day and pulled 812 ton of gravel out of IMI for just to put along. That's a lot. That's a big day for us. That's every, I even pulled the mechanic out of the garage and pulled the side guy out of the side to drive trucks yesterday. Because we were so far away, you know, it just, going to be setting if we didn't. So, we don't do that, go that far on a regular basis, but yesterday was a little different, so we could get that done. But, that went well, I think roads look good, you know, that kind of winding down. I think they got a few things to do on Ziegler Road there for the, we got to put the reflectors back in the road, maybe, and stuff like that, but.
As of yesterday, that was all that was left on Ziegler today, was the reflectors on the center line. And they, they did get the, the rimless strips ground back in.
Did they, I didn't, I haven't been that way today, I didn't know when they did that. I was told it was going to happen, is what I was told, so I just.
They did it yesterday.
Okay. Our issue on Wellsley Road is better, so that's, I don't know how that come about. It must have got pushed through all right and made that happen, so. It, there's still just a little question there, but I think he'll finish that up, it'll be fine. So, that's, that's pretty much taken care of there on his part, so.
Good.
We're going to go with that.
Do you think perhaps you'll do any strip patching yet this year?
I hope to pave here soon. We really needed to stop and do a few other things in this process around that road widener, but I did not do it, because us stopping and getting into something else and then getting back to the project we was on is awfully hard. It's just everything comes up. So that's why, once we got on the road deal, we just stayed with it. I said, we are going to finish that before we do anything else. I think, as far as I'm aware, the paver is ready to go, and I hope, which is, I'm not saying we'll get to paving this week, but I would say by next week, we're going to pave.
Okay.
We've got some, some stuff to do that with, so we'll, barring problems with the paver, we're going to be paving, I think, next week, so. And we'll pave, I think you guys wanted that 150 paved between 400 and Hawkinsville Road, right? We'll get there.
We'll figure it's done, no harm.
We done did the other, the other part's done, so that might as well look right, didn't it? It won't, it won't be a big deal, we can get that, so, that'll work all right. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. County surveyor, do you have anything? Hi, Perry. Mr. County Attorney, do you have anything for us today?
Not today.
Okay. Do you have any mail?
Nope.
You want to share? How about some old business?
Are we doing that? The gate? Security gate?
You can take care of that today if you want to.
If we can, we got everything.
Sheriff's Department, right? Because Zach said that Amy Becker would be here to speak on that at around 2:30, so.
So we wait, I think we should.
I don't know if you need him, but.
Well, we can do something else until 2:30, it's, it's not, it's just a minute or two away. Julie, right?
Yep.
Julie, why don't you come up and?
Yes.
Talk to us today.
Hi. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Julie Gollier, I work for Indiana Farm Bureau, Incorporated side of our regional manager for them, and I cover Fayette and Franklin, Union, Shelby, DeGater, and Rush Counties. Not too long ago, two weeks ago?
Yeah, maybe three now.
Maybe three now. Tracy, actually, her and her husband hosted a congressional visit with Jefferson Shreve at her farm. And Dale was able to attend, along with, we have the superintendent, we had.
Highway.
You guys were all there too. Make sure I get your names before I read. But it was a very successful event, I just wanted to say thank you to you for doing that. It was a great conversation. I had tried, I've known Nick Thomas, who owns Fountain with Grain, quite. It was a great conversation. I had tried, I've known Nick Thomas, who was found with grain quite some time. And he's quite a busy man, as you can imagine, with his business. Very knowledgeable, very kind person. But he was very instrumental in a very needed conversation for farmers. That hasn't happened very often, and sometimes when it does, it gets a little heated. And it did not. It was very respectful. Jefferson Sharif was, I've been very impressed with him. Not to share my opinion, but he doesn't know much about agriculture, and that's okay. But he's very willing to learn and say, well, teach me, you know, tell me, what, what do I need to know? What do I need to take back to Washington DC? It was a very candid, honest, open conversation about input costs and output costs. And how all the farmers are being affected with tariffs and all the different things that are going on in the world today. Just a very scary time. My husband and I are farmers ourselves, and Dale does, and Tracy and her husband does too. And maybe others of you in the room do as well, so you all some of the pressures of what's going on. But it was a great, really great conversation, and I think I've had more, and this isn't about me by any means. But I've had more people that were there, whether they were from Farm Bureau or the community, or have attended at other events. To say what a great conversation that was and one that so badly needed to happen. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. Might be something that, I mean, we do these throughout, not throughout the year, but usually starting like May and June. Of course, this was more of a August recess session. But if anyone's ever interested in wanting to host one of those in the future, host on your farm or in the shop, whatever. It just so happens that Tracy had the most beautiful place to have it in, but we're so very used to having it in a shop and barn with tractors and equipment. And that's totally fine, because that's what we farmers do. So, but if you're ever interested in that, get ahold of Tracy, she'll get ahold of me or Dale. You can get ahold of me if you don't have my contact information, or I can give it to you today. But thank you very much for hosting that, and I was glad to have Fayette County highlighted for that.
That's nice. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, we're waiting for.
I think he's about to come in.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? I had a conversation, Dale and you, you'll know who I'm talking about. It's a positive, very positive conversation, but I didn't know if you could elaborate, and if you want to have a private conversation about it, that's totally fine. But about the need, like for more of a farm store here. That conversation I had was with Brad Coulter. And so I didn't know if you could, if I could help or be of a resource or, or if you know, if you want to allocate your time and give me more information on that, that's totally fine. But I'm assuming, which isn't always the best idea, that I know Tractor Supply, sometimes my husband and I can find things that we need for the farm or equipment or, you know, skids here breaks down, tractor or whatever, or sprayer, planer, or whatever, and we need just a certain little part. They don't always have those, and I'm not putting them down. Actually, my son works with them. He's higher up, so not, definitely not putting them down, but Rill King tends, at least that's where we tend to go most of the time. Would you agree? I mean, but you'd have to go to Newcastle or?
Greensburg.
Yeah, so you have to go pretty far to get that. And I know you have Napa Auto Parts, but is that more for cars? Because I really don't know, to be honest. I'm not.
Little bit of both.
A little bit of both, okay. So I didn't know if there was like, what would you suggest as a farmer?
I would like to see something, I know Brad, we had talked a little bit, but John Deere of Rushville's closing.
Okay, that's what he was trying to say to me, and I didn't know that. And I was like, I.
They're moving.
Okay.
They're moving to Knightstown.
Okay.
So I talked to him about trying to maybe talk to Caning or Reynolds about opening a parts store in this area or something. Tried to get something in here to get parts, keep it around.
Okay, well, then I can help him a little bit further, have your information.
Get rid of Rushville's, either got to go to, what, it'd be Knightstown, Richmond, or Oxford.
Then probably the other influence dealers in Rushville only have certain.
Well, Caning is the only John Deere dealer.
Right, but then you've got two Massey's.
Yeah, you got a Massey and it's cleaner and takes by age.
They don't always have what you need then.
Are you guys, are you guys waiting on me? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were.
Sorry, Zach, just letting you know, who's the?
Julie going to get us a Rill King or not?
I hope she can. I love Rill King. Need a nice big building.
I think these are all right. Yeah, so Zach just hollered at me. I apologize for being late. I had an obligation at the, one of the elementary schools till 2:30. Tried to hustle straight here, but these are, these are the estimates or quotes that we received for the fence. Going from the back of our jail over to the new female center, the female detention center. There's several quotes, some of those, if you look at them. And I haven't had a chance, I know that when we were speaking with these folks, that some of these were galvanized, some of them were aluminum. Aluminum's a little bit more expensive. Some of them were doing them with a swinging gate. Some of them were with a cantilever style gate. I know that Friendly Contracting, I know, did two different quotes. One with a cantilever style gate, one with a swinging style gate. And I know that their quote included the electrical work where some of the other quotes did not. But again, I just pulled these real quick, and I don't remember because some of these have been just a little bit since we had them come in and do them. But I believe we had four different companies. Friendly Contracting, Oler, Higher Standards Fabrication, and Integrity Property Solutions, who all gave us quotes for this work to be done. They're all fairly similar. Yeah, it looks like Friendly quoted 34,200. And I believe both of his were aluminum, if I remember right. 34,200 with a cantilever style gate, 29,200 if you swing it open. With a 20, I think they're all 20 foot long gates. And that swing would be on the, the swing or the cantilever would be there on the west side, I'm sorry, east side, behind the building, facing out toward Central Avenue. If you guys have any questions, I'll answer the best that I can. Zach done some of these. I had spoke to a few of them or a couple of them.
So they have a, it's eight foot?
Eight foot high, yeah.
And then they have the angle, like this picture on the top?
Wire on the top should be standard with all of them. Looks like Oler, if I'm seeing here right, quoted 35,700. And they added, it says add 4,000 if you want to go with aluminum instead of steel. So you'd be looking at 39,700, about 40,000 if you want aluminum with them. And with theirs, it also says customer will be responsible for supplying all electric needed to the gate operator, including control inside the jail. So you're going to have an additional cost with that. With Higher Standards Fabrication, and I'm just reading what you guys can read right in front of you. Just for those who are watching and can't, can't see what we're looking at. So. If I remember correctly, we initially received some quotes that had electronic keypads, were keypad locking styles. And then we also received some that were just padlock style locks, which I'm not sure that one makes any difference over the other. Other than to save us some money by going with a padlock completely up to you guys.
One gate will have to be, will be padlocked.
Right.
The other gate will be automatically controlled.
Okay.
This project is actually two sets of gates together. And it's made, made interpreting these bids a little bit fuzzy.
Yeah.
For me. But I think, I think we know what appears to be.
I think the big cost difference would be in, in hiring a second contractor to do the electric work. From what I've seen.
Well, before, some of the quotes we had didn't include any of the electrical controls or anything.
Right.
The sheriff has had them rewrite these to include that.
Yep.
Okay, Jane, you want me to read these to you or have you got?
Yeah, you could read them, but I've got it from a copy eating.
Okay. As long as, as long as we've got it on record, that's the main thing. So we do have, for the gates behind the jail, we do have quotes here from Friendly Contracting for $34,200. One from Integrity Property Solutions, $32,895. And one from Higher Standards Fabrication for $25,500 for galvanized steel gate or $30,000 even for aluminum. And the, of course, you know, the only advantage to aluminum is it's a lighter gate and it's easier on the opening and closing mechanisms. And of course, we have a quote also from Oler Fence Incorporated for 35,700. Okay.
If I'm understanding right, on this friendly one, the only difference is this isn't the cattail, right?
Yeah, one's a cantilever and one's, one's, one that just swings open.
So, okay.
Am I correct in my thinking that a cantilever style gate is just one that's going to run along that wall on its own tracks, correct? And others just going to swing out? So, I mean, I don't know how much difference that makes, what you guys think.
Depending on how much snow we get.
Right. Well, we thought about that, Zach and I thought about that too. If you get a bunch of snow, you're not going to be able to swing one, and you're also going to have to keep the tracks cleaned up. So you're probably shoveling more snow with the, with the kind that swings than you are with a cantilever style. But I don't know how bad those freeze up or do you think, I'm not super experienced with gates, so.
I know they got, that's what they got at the airport.
Right.
We've never had any trouble getting in.
They have the cantilever style?
Yeah.
How wide's the opening? Like, how long is this gate going to be? Because I'm just sitting here thinking about a swing gate.
20 foot.
Something parked back 20 feet from the gate seems convenient as well.
I thought about that also.
Yeah, might get too close, be up too far and it swings into a weird conversation.
Really, the people who park in that area right now is Jarboe and his crew. When they're in and out of there real quick, they'll pull up and park real fast and do what they need to do and be gone. We don't typically have jail staff or deputies who park there a whole lot. And leave their vehicle for a shift or anything like that. Right? But we do take up a lot of that parking back there to where if Josh and his crew need to do something, they, oftentimes that's where they'll stop and do what they need to do. Because it doesn't, they don't take up parking spot all day.
Well, we can see who the low bidder is. The only thing we need to really decide is whether we want to go with the aluminum gate or steel gate on the cantilever.
I will say that, make sure you guys are looking, not all of these include electric.
It says Friendly, it says the only one that includes electric.
Yeah, Friendly, I think, is the only one that included electric, and I'm, I don't. I don't believe any of the others said that they would do electric.
Yeah, this one says it's not included, and they have a statement, it's not included, the HSE one.
Says, control wiring will be supplied and installed by customer, Integrity.
Higher Standards, right there at the bottom of what, right above their drawing of the gate, it says in quotation, well, wiring electric from the gate to the facility is not included in the quote. I thought that as I was looking at it, I only seen electric on one. And I don't know if it's, you know, I don't know what it's going to cost to quote just electric.
Now, these were the same questions we had last time the sheriff was here. And maybe we want to straighten all that out. Now, if you don't feel like it's right to your liking, we can still take it to the later date.
I'd like to table it.
Okay.
Because this one isn't matching the others.
Which one do you have questions with there?
Well, the Friendly, he's got installed a 17 by eight foot tall swing gate. This one over here is an eight foot gate. So you're, quite a bit of difference here.
Look, I noticed that, and it is very difficult to walk over.
Yep.
Seeing that up here where it says, like on this one, install 17 by eight, but here it says install 20 foot swing gate.
Interesting here, where we got the cantilever.
Mm-hmm.
It's a 17 foot gate here, it's a 32 foot gate here. He's a 30 foot gate with an eight foot gate. So there's a lot of difference.
Right.
And the dollar amounts, if I get equal, one might come up, one's going to go down.
Right.
Type deal, so I think we need to get, get the gates all the same size.
And then we just tell them what size we're doing.
I think that, I thought it was supposed to be a 20 foot gate, am I correct?
That's what I thought.
I thought that was discussed prior with all these guys.
Yeah, and they got different. Yeah, the rest don't have 30.
He got 32, this one's got a 30, this one's a 20. That one's a 20.
Yeah, that make a difference in it.
Okay, so Zach just texted me, he said the Harrison, the Oler gate do not include electric. Integrity may. Supply and install the gate drive to secure enclosed area between buildings, supply and install single wall chain leak fence slats. But even on this Integrity one, seeing where it says control wiring will be supplied and installed by customer, which makes me think it's not a completed.
Are you reading what he's saying about Friendly? He said it's, it's, there's, control wiring is to control, and Friendly isn't doing that.
No, I don't have that message. Probably watching, seeing I wasn't looking for fun. Do we want, do we want a folding or, do you want a folding or a stationary gate? Do we know? I guess that's, that's his question.
The gate on the west end, back there by the kitchen, we decided to, we've only got room. room to do only a swinging gate.
Right. Yep. Because it would run into the building.
Right.
Yep.
And then on the east end, they're right at the corner of the, the old Sally Port.
Yeah, run right, right along the Sally.
Run along.
Okay. So a swinging gate on the west and a cantilever style on the east is what we want.
Yes.
And we want those to be twenty foot wide? We want them to be, I don't know how much room there is there. There's at least thirty foot there.
I'd have to go with maybe...
Maybe that's how they came up with the thirty. Is one of them twenty and the other one ten? Is it, we're talking two? Is that it? That one area, ten?
Okay. Zach says they quoted a, a twenty foot gate, but the whole fence is around thirty. They, he says all of them are meaning to say that it's a twenty foot gate.
Okay.
But it's a thirty foot opening. But it's a thirty foot. So some of it's not going to be gate. Does that make sense? Some of it's just going to be fence. Yeah, some of it'll be fence. And I think these guys just have different ways of trying to say the same thing.
So then really, none of them have electric based on...
It sounds like one did. What was that? I know that Friendly would...
Zach, Zach said it.
What did he say?
Control wiring is to control room. Friendly isn't doing that.
Okay. So, so he's going to do it to the electric panel, but we'll need to get the control wire over to control to where the control officer can control the gate.
Yes.
The rest of them, I don't think have that.
But this one says...
Or, or maybe Integrity does, and they are also without the control wiring. So it sounds like the two that are, that are going to do electric, and I'm sorry, I wish...
Well, this HSF has gate transmitter on its bid. Wouldn't that be something electrical?
Yeah, what, the only part that, that I'm unsure about is where it says all wiring electric from the gate to the facility is not included in the quote, in their quotations, which makes me think that maybe they, they supply whatever electric box is going to be outside.
On the gate.
Right. But the wiring and the electrical work will be separate.
Zach is saying both Friendly and Integrity included electric on it. That's going to be killing him wherever he is watching us.
Yeah, I know, it's going to be bothering him bad. So they're, none of them, none of them is a one hundred percent...
Finished job.
Finished job, correct? I think that two of them, two of them are going to supply the power to the building, but they're not going to supply the control wire. So Integrity and Friendly are going to do that? Yes. And that's probably the two you need to be focusing on then, if you want much, you want to. Does that make sense?
Yes. I was hoping we could get one installer to do the whole job so that we don't have to have someone else come in and clean up the mess, you know?
I agree. But they're probably not wanting to get into the, it's a control panel from inside. They're probably not wanting to, that's probably the, the thing.
And then when it comes to the...
That's, that's a little high tech and they're not wanting to.
Yeah, when it comes to the control panel of, or jail, that's more Michael King's territory, or someone else's, you know?
Well, I'm not so sure that couldn't be something that we could do with our own county employees, you know? That, that wouldn't be much of a, a cost to run the wire into control with a button that says open and close. I, I mean, I'm not an electrician and I'm, you know, certainly not great with electrical, but it doesn't sound like that's, maybe it is. Maybe it's more complicated than what I'm thinking in my mind. Maybe a good question for Michael King or Josh Jarboe.
Yeah. Well, when you start trying to interpret
Yeah.
the wording that the bidders use in these, it's kind of hard to get a clear understanding of what their intent is.
This one does, the norm is electric will be supplied and installed to the gate opener from the nearest building, and the control wiring will be supplied and installed by the customer. So Integrity is saying they will, electric will be supplied and installed to the gate
Is this pretty urgent?
I say we, did you say...
I mean, part of me wants to go back to all four of these and say, give us a quote that's a complete project.
Yeah.
And tell us if it's a twenty... Well, we had two of them say we don't do electric at all, so that's out of the realm of possibility. And that's an important function of us.
Well, we find out from our people what they can do and what they're asking for.
And they might not be, it's, it sounds like maybe they can't, I don't know. But if they can't, then that concerns me on who we're going to find that can. I'm with you, it seems pretty simple though. Yeah.
I'm going to table for our next meeting.
I'll second it.
What would you like from, from us in the meantime? Do you want us to try and get back all of these guys? Do you, do you think we need, hey, this is exactly what I want quoted?
Yep. I think it needs to be spelled out, we need this side gate, this size of a gate, this type of a gate, and electric to, and to the building.
Okay.
And then that way everybody bids the same.
Well, I think we need to contact two of them, because I think two of them told us we don't do electric, we don't have electricians who are certified to do anything like that. So do we want to look at hiring a secondary contractor to do the electric on that work? Or do we want to just get completed quotes on, hey, we want, you know? You need me to call Friendly and Integrity Solutions, or Integrity Property Solutions and say, you know, hey, I just want clarification that this is what you quoted. We want a cantilever style gate on the east side that's twenty foot wide. We want a twenty foot wide swinging gate on the west side. We want it eight foot tall with barbed wire on the top, the three-layer barbed wire, free, free run barbed wire, with control box outside. And am I correct in thinking that you guys are not going to supply the control wire from the electric panel or box into our control room in the facility? Is that...
Basically a, a completed project.
Okay.
I think, I think they ought to be able to, like, if his bid already included Integrity...
Yeah.
Then the ones who don't have it, I, I don't know if we could see, if we could see with a contractor how much that electrician would bid that hard, so we'd know in comparison. Might still come out better if someone else let another contractor, because I don't know. I don't know. My, my thought is to be thorough and giving everyone a chance, maybe even us with our own, like you said, Josh, or, I don't know, if they may be able to do this, if it's not that complicated. Save us some money, if you're willing.
The jail's security is what concerns me with just, you know what I'm saying? Yeah. Yeah. Well, I could certainly jump on whatever I need to and start making some phone calls. I think the issue is that Zach was spearheading this for the most part, and then I jumped in and tried to learn what he already knows. I think that if he was standing here in front of you, you'd get a much better explanation than what I'm able to provide you right now. Unfortunately, he's tied up at the school today as well. So I'll see if I can get some better quotes, and then I'll talk to him. And we'll be back at the next meeting.
We have a motion by Dale second to Tracy to postpone decision on the gates until our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you, deputy.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any more old business we need to take up? Got any new business we need to talk about? Okay. Is there any patron concerns in the room? All that leaves is claims and payroll then.
Second.
We've got a motion by Dale second to Tracy to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, send the father say an aye. I don't even want that sign there. I know it's not to release a lane.
Yeah.
Is that the CSI?
Yeah.
Okay, now this, here's one for the recorder. Says two single...
Well, you would cross that out because they don't sign contracts.
Okay. Last two blue markers. That concludes our agenda for today. We've got a motion, Tracy second to Dale to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.